Once again, you will have the great joy of being able to call the same role you've called twice today.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Snidely?
Here. I would make a note that Council Regu can't make it and let us know that ahead of time. I would now ask for those who are willing or interested to join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Is there any additions or corrections? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved, we'll move to public participation. Our first item is appointments to boards and commissions. We have two vacancies, one on Planning Commission replacing Counselor Smith, and we have one on the Civil Rights Commission.
And I would make a motion that we appoint Suzanne Zazicki to the Civil Rights Commission and Jeff Cruth to the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you to all the people who have indicated an interest in our boards and commissions, and we will have more openings as we get towards June. And so if there are boards or commissions that you might be interested in, I recommend that you go attend one of those meetings and see if it's really your cup of tea, but almost all of them will have some openings in June. Okay, now, anyone who wishes to address council about items that are not on the agenda tonight, or if they're on the consent agenda, please come forward, give us your name, where you live for the record, and you can have up to five minutes. I have to keep my own time this time. So give me a second. We really do try to be fair. Okay.
Anne Fier, I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I'm a property owner who recently received a real estate property tax statement from Butler County Treasurer Michael McNamara, so I am very aware of the value of our property and the property taxes we pay. I'm here with one ask. Please provide the public with the opportunity to have an open public conversation that gives us a chance to understand and give feedback about your strategy for addressing the deficit in funding for fire and EMS services. Last week I attended the council retreat to review the 2024 city budget and begin planning for the 2025 budget. It is important that these meetings are open to the public, and I thank you for that opportunity. However, there's no chance for public comment or question and answer during the work sessions and retreats, so I'm making the request now. Comprehensive Plan Goal C-7A is a connected, livable, and equitable community for all. Actions to achieve that goal in 2024 include, again from the plan, coordinate public safety needs with local partners and ensure adequate staffing and compensation for public safety staff. Measures of success include negotiating with Miami University a higher percentage contribution for fire EMS capital expenditures, by May of this year, review and identify possible funding sources for fire EMS operations, and by July of this year, develop and implement an action plan to establish funding for fire and EMS operations. I'm glad that the criterion of equitable is included. It suggests fairness and justice. I don't find an increase in property taxes for local homeowners to be an equitable solution to the deficit in financing of fire and EMS services. Members of the public who will be asked to vote on tax levies should be given the opportunity to understand data relevant to who uses services and who pays for services. We should have opportunities to understand why there is not a better match between use and payment, and we should be able to collaboratively explore equitable options. Details of the current situation have been alluded to repeatedly but never openly discussed over the over two years that I've been observing council meetings. Most often, it's suggested that if more public input is sought and received, requests for information and change would overwhelm already heavily burdened staff. I get that, it's not that I don't get that. So then, how to enact representative government? Thankfully, I did learn more by reading this story on page seven in the February 2nd issue of the Miami Student. At council meetings in December, you celebrated reaching an equitable agreement with Milford Township for the provision of fire and EMS services. What differentiates Milford Township from Miami? With the current structure of council meetings, it's not feasible to conduct a public presentation of the proposed solution to this problem before May of 2024 that would provide an opportunity for the public to ask questions and receive responses to assure that Miami finances an equitable portion of the costs. A different format for exchange is required. I look forward to this opportunity and to encouraging other members of the public to collaborate. And in speaking now, I've spoken both for myself and on behalf of the Board of Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice.
Thank you, Anne, appreciate it very much. Welcome.
I'm Kathy Brinkman, I live on Emerald Wood Drive in Oxford. I'm going to tag on to what Anne said, I'm a member and a board member of Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice, and I concur with the statement that she's made. I've spoken to several of you about fire and EMS, so you know what I'm going to say, there's not enough information out there. I was here about a year ago, and it was a work session, much like the work session that just concluded, and the city manager gave an extensive presentation on fire and EMS calls and the shortfall. But those work sessions aren't recorded, so even after people became aware, as I've spoken to them and others have spoken to them about the problem, there's no way to go back and see that data. At the last Miami University trustee meeting on December 15th, I addressed trustees about the shortfall and the out-of-sync-ness of the calls versus the payment, and I encouraged them to pay their fair share. Now, several of the people in the audience I spoke with afterwards, they asked where they could get more information, it's simply not publicly available. So I have three suggestions. From my perspective, we need three things. We need information on the website, on the city's website, so that we can point people to that data. The information should include the runs, the funding, and where the shortfall is going to be. A presentation at city council meetings, so there have been conversations here, but they're never agenda items, and so people don't focus on that, so there will be a comment at the end of another topic. There were some comments when the Milford agreement was approved, but it's never its own agenda item. So I talk to people, and there's really no awareness of this shortfall. And then, in addition to an agenda item on a city council meeting or another format, I agree with Anne, we need an opportunity for people to ask questions and voice their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. While anyone else is deciding whether they'd like to come up, I would point out that if any decisions are made about property taxes or anything else, or any agreement is made, it will come to council, it will be an agenda item, and we will talk about it. It's always in public. So the negotiations, not always in public. Is there anyone else who would like to address council tonight? Okay, thank you very much, and we will move to the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved, we'll move to resolutions, you may read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with McCluskey Chevrolet for the purchase of a 2024 Silverado at open market pricing at a cost not to exceed $56,685.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, chief, welcome.
Good evening.
Talk to us.
What you have in front of you there is a request for approval to purchase a new vehicle for the fire department. It was a budgeted item for this year to replace a vehicle that almost a year and a half we lost the engine in, and we're not able to fund a replacement engine for it, so this is where we're at.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any discussion?
We budgeted $85,000, but our purchase price is $56,600.
Good deal.
Does that include, is that the base model?
There is upfitting to be done.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah.
That'll be.
This is just a.
That's budgeted.
This is the base price, okay.
And do we have delivery date on that?
It is setting them a lot.
Okay, that's more luck than we've had lately. Okay, good.
Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, let's get that truck.
Thank you very much.
Can you read the second?
A resolution declaring that it is necessary to approve those portions of certain properties as shown on Exhibit A attached here too, in the city of Oxford, Ohio, by repaving, recurbing, and repairing the sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. In advance of our annual street resurfacing program, the city has identified substandard curb gutter and sidewalk which needs to be improved prior to our street improvement program. We do this by following Ohio Revised Code Section 729, and that is a four-part process, and tonight is step one, a resolution of necessity. There's an extensive list on Exhibit A of properties that have defective curb gutter and sidewalk. We will send them official certified notice once council approves this resolution. They will have at least 45 days to make the repairs themselves. If not, the city would come back to council for a contractor to do the work. Step three would be a notice of actual costs to be approved by council, and then the final step would be a levying ordinance of the cost to the properties. So hopefully, we have an extensive list here, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Hopefully, many of the property owners will take advantage of the notice, do the work themselves, more likely at a cheaper cost than what the city would do the work for because of prevailing wages and other costs of business. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Before I go to the public, for the general public's information, could you give us an idea what streets are involved? I know it's on the attachment, but most people don't read the attachment.
Campus Avenue from Church to Sycamore, Poplar Street from High Street to Sycamore. There are also two side streets with those, Willow Lane will be done, and also Woodruff Court, Church Street from Locust to Talawanda. That includes segments of US 27, so we'll be allowed to use some of our fuel and license plate money for that part of the segment of the roadway. Vine Street from the Western Terminus to College Avenue and Beach Street, and also Vine from University to Talawanda, and Withrow Street from the West Terminus to Talawanda. We believe that pricing has stabilized, prices were very high last year, they were up about 32%.
Yeah.
We believe they'll be more stable this year.
The list seems longer.
So we did also bid three alternates, so if we do get some good pricing, we will have alternates. And that is Erickson Drive, which we delayed last year, Oberlin Court and Rooster Place, and also the three-way stop at Brookville, Chestnut, Oxford Riley Road. We would do some improvements there in advance of Phase Four of the Ouch Trail, and make that as pedestrian-friendly. We also have some shoves and eaves in the asphalt that we will correct there.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any comments, questions?
Just a quick question about Erickson, because didn't the people on Erickson have to improve their curb and gutter last summer? Was it anticipated that that would be part of the paving program previously?
Yes, there were some issues, the city chose to accommodate their request to delay for one year.
Okay.
There was a death in the family of one of the property owners, and so we tried to accommodate that.
Most of the people on Erickson did go.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I was just, because I knew.
One property owner that had that problem.
Okay, that's fine, I just, because in the kind of quid pro quo, you do have to do your curb and gutter, but you get a new pavement out of it.
Yeah.
So to the degree that those folks get their new pavement sometime shortly after they do the paving work, the curb work would be nice.
Yeah.
So we do have to manage our costs, and the more we ask the contractor to stop and pick up and go to another part of the city, the higher our costs are, so we do try to cluster and minimize mobilization from the contractor.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I noticed that there are several City of Oxford properties listed on here, I was just curious about how that works, right? Like, we talked through what it looks like for a property owner, what does it look like when the city is the property owner?
So council does give us a budget to improve the public's portion where we have concrete work to do.
Great.
So where possible, we do that work in-house, where it's not possible, we'll use some of our budgeted funds and piggyback onto the city's contractor that's doing the other public work.
Cool, thank you.
Amber?
Can you clarify for me, please, Mr. Dreisbach, the difference between total estimated project cost public and total estimated cost to property? There's like a $145,000 difference?
So the public cost is our anticipated costs of paving, street markings, new signage, things of that nature in the public right-of-way. The private cost is what our estimate is for private property owners to meet their obligation for curb gutter and sidewalk improvements.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, we'll move to C.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year contract with Flock Group Incorporated for the subscription of cameras and data storage, software licensing, and support for the police division at a cost not to exceed $50,600 for the first year and $42,000 annually.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We've talked about this a little bit recently in the CIP discussion, but since before 2015 or before my time as chief, the city's been talking about getting safety cameras uptown to assist in solving crimes, preventing disorder, and responding to different issues. But however, we were met with a lot of hurdles, whether it's technology, budget, and different obstacles, and eventually that project fell off the radar. In the years before that, we used to have license plate reader technology out on US 27 north by the entrance to Walmart, and it helped us solve many crimes over the years. Those were owned by the city, and eventually that technology stopped working, and we are no longer able to keep that up and running. It's been offline for a few years now, and it's been sorely missed. The solution I have before you is one that combines the previous two concepts into a much better product. It's subscription-based, meaning we don't own the cameras, we're not responsible for the maintenance of the cameras, and we've already been given access to this system, Flock Safety Cameras, and our detectives have been using it already to solve cases that originate in Oxford, yet we capture the vehicles on other communities' cameras in Butler County. So we've been working with the analysts from Flock to develop a map for placement of these cameras around the edge of the city that would capture objective data from vehicles, which would include their license plates. It also would include one-point tilt zoom camera that would be placed uptown near the high main parks and overlook the parks, we'd be able to control that. The other cameras would be on poles, solar power, around, like I said, near the edge of the city. The project was included in the 2024 capital improvement budget for $50,000. The initial cost after we priced these out was $50,600, which we could easily absorb into our budget, and then ongoing operational costs for the subscriptions, $42,000 annually. So with that growing network of Flock cameras of communities here in Butler County, also elsewhere in Ohio, and now Indiana, Kentucky, and really all around the nation, it's become a great investigative tool for solving retail thefts, hit-skip, traffic crashes, assaults, and other crimes. But what makes these unique is they're a preventative tool as well, they provide real-time alerting of stolen vehicles, Amber Alerts, missing persons, so when those vehicles come into town, officers on duty get an alert that this just hit their Flock camera. So I think this will be a great tool to promote safety and livability in Oxford, and I would recommend passage of this. If you have detailed questions that, or maybe technical questions, I have Lieutenant Robinson here to help you answer those.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Anyone from the public like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors, any questions? Yeah.
Do they also work as just regular cameras and not just the license plate detection system?
So the one uptown would be one that we would. What the license plate readers catch is they capture a whole picture of the car, so often, yes, you can see the camera if they're positioned properly, you can see whether it turned into the community park or did it go straight, so I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't know if you want to add to that.
Right, so with the technology now, they do capture the picture of the vehicle, and there is some software we can use within their product that allows us to search for a red Ford Mustang, for example.
But if there was another incident around?
They do not, they're more still frame captures as opposed to a motion capture that's going to be recording all the time, so they're triggered by the vehicle coming into view.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
My question is just, this came in as a capital item, but the nearly equivalent cost is the ongoing operational cost of the subscription is really, so have we anticipated in that we'll be able to afford that in ongoing years?
Yes, we build it into our ongoing budget.
Okay.
And there's other contractual costs in our operation budget that we, you know, have eliminated, and we can absorb it there, and in presenting this with capital, we make sure to put it in our operating team.
Yeah, I would just comment, you watch crime shows or whatever, and it's a wonder anyone gets away with anything anymore, because the visibility, the moral of the story, don't try to do a crime, because you're going to be captured by any number of different cameras, and I don't know if, and people are too dumb to be deterred by the knowledge that they're not going to get away with it, but it has to really up your ability to solve crimes, right? I mean, it's an amazing tool.
Okay, thank you, Amber.
Few questions. One, this is not for the public's awareness, these are not red light cameras, right? You're not using them for?
That's correct, in fact.
Right.
I don't know that they will even see the traffic signals, so to speak, and most of them are not immediately upon an intersection. They're spaced away where we don't capture necessarily the vehicle going through an intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Catch it before it hits the intersection.
Great.
We've tried to map these so that we have the best coverage with as few cameras as possible.
And it also mentions that the data will be saved for no more than 30 days, so if something was needed beyond 30 days?
That's their standard retention. We got into this a little bit with our body cameras, our body cameras are well beyond what the standard retention is that we have, and we've had to pay for that cost. So should we want to up the retention beyond their standard 30 days, there may be an additional cost with that, but that's something that we would have to come back with them and renegotiate on that. But yes, right now it's 30 days, and that's pretty much standard from what we're seeing.
My last question is, item number eight on page 75, they mention indemnification, and it says intentionally omitted. Can anyone explain that?
I think Mr. Pinnard might have to.
Well, I've got to get to where we are here, so I'm looking at the timeline.
It's part of the memorandum of understanding.
What page is it?
It's 75 in our packet.
Item eight.
Item eight. Mm-hmm.
Just.
Because I think that has to do with liability to.
Typically, the law department addresses that.
They had an indemnification clause, and we can't agree to that, so that's why it's omitted.
Okay.
Right, Chris?
That's correct.
Yeah. In a lot of the contracts we send for legal review that have those clauses, the legal department usually will request that they mark that out and eliminate it, so.
Okay, so it's not part of the contract.
To not put liability on us, yeah.
Okay.
What was your question again, counsel?
Why was the indemnification intentionally omitted? What does that mean?
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't need to see that. I can't answer that. Okay. Ohio law is very clear that municipalities, public political subdivisions, may not indemnify contractually or third parties. That requires, under the interpretation, this is almost a half a century old or law, that if there is an indemnification provision, then you've got to withhold funds in your budget for the potential indemnity. So you could imagine how much money would have to be withheld, and so what ends up happening is with larger, big companies, they don't understand why in Ohio there can't be indemnification provisions, but companies that contract with Ohio municipalities, political subdivisions, they understand that. So sometimes what you will see is language that says to the extent permitted by law, because what that hints at is the company won't take it out, because they can't grasp the fact that, under Ohio law, indemnification is not permitted. I hope that explanation makes sense.
I think so, it's helpful.
It really comes down to that Heidi would have to, the finance department would have to find money and withhold it, and it would sew hamstring your spending, you wouldn't be able to do anything.
Thank you.
We're pretty used to that one, I think, we send contracts up, every time, I think I've redlined that before it even gets to legal. We're just used to that in every contract.
Other questions or concerns?
I'm just timeline.
Two, three months. We've identified the sites, they'll come onsite and actually inspect them to make sure that right-of-way is correct, make sure that what we had from our maps and our photos, where we developed the overall map, actually exists, and that nothing has changed, but they hopefully will do that within the next month or so, and then we'll get on to their schedule, and I would anticipate by summer they should be up and running.
So when we did this originally, all Ohio cars had front license plates, now they're not required.
And that's why we've positioned them the way we have.
So this captures rear plates, okay.
Yeah, you'd likely pass these every day if you're driving in Butler County, but you don't realize, until you know what they are, then you see them.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Just one real question.
Yes.
So I assume since it only stores it for 30 days, if there's an incident, we then download the data necessary and keep it ourselves as evidence?
Right, we would offload the data to a case file, so to speak, and maintain it, but if there's, if a crime goes unreported and we haven't had the opportunity to look at them, 30 days comes and goes, and, you know, in our world, that's actually a long time. A lot of CCTVs in stores, you might be anywhere from 72 hours to a couple of weeks, so that much data is very expensive to store.
Thank you very much, both of you, appreciate it. Is there any other discussion, questions? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, we'll move to the next one, you can read.
A resolution directing the city manager to submit a $1 million affordable housing program proposal to the Butler County Commissioners for their allocation of their American Rescue Plan funds.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded, Jessica?
Good evening. In September of 2023, County Administrator Judy Boyko informed us that the county commissioners had granted our community an additional $1 million in ARPA funds. They did require that these funds be used to serve a disparate population and to mitigate the needs of the underserved. To receive the funding, we had to have a council resolution and submit a program proposal. We've had two work sessions to discuss multitudes of ideas, and I feel like what we talked about was that to direct this funding toward affordable housing. So what we have before you is to apply for one project, one. one million dollars for infrastructure for affordable housing that will be split between two projects. The first will be to assist the Cottage Community Project at five-two-three-four Hester Road, where Community Development Professionals is constructing twelve units of tiny homes and providing wraparound case management services. Their infrastructure costs are estimated to be six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, which is outlined in the agenda, and we would grant them five hundred thousand dollars as a sub-recipient. The second affordable housing project is a development at the three-point-three-three acres at six-oh-one, six-oh-three, and six-oh-seven West Chestnut, where we are currently negotiating a development agreement with Habitat for Humanity to construct up to thirty-eight townhome units. These townhomes will be three to four bedrooms, two stories, and have an unfinished basement. They will be in blocks of four to eight townhomes and constructed over the next several years. Because Habitat has yet to submit any engineered drawings, our service department has created a preliminary estimate, and this estimate was five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. And it's also attached to the agenda. This does not exclude numerous other things that they could have, such as, you know, excavation, demolition, grubby, and all that kind of stuff. And we do feel that their infrastructure costs will well exceed five hundred thousand. But we would also give them five hundred thousand as a sub-recipient grant to help with their infrastructure costs for both of these housing projects. And I do have a representative from Habitat here who could speak to this. And then Community Development Professionals is actually still at the Middletown City Council meeting and was unable to leave that to get here in time. So she extends her apologies.
Thank you very much. Do you want to talk first, or do you want to? Because you're welcome to come and talk to us. We're big supporters of Habitat.
Thank you so much. My name is Megan Galicki. I'm the Director of Operations at Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati, which incorporates construction, our Critical Home Repair Program. For those of you that don't know about it, we do. Affordable at no cost to homeowners that are in need of critical home repairs. And then we also have a construction training program, but I'm here for construction. Development costs for infrastructure and things like that for any developer, large builder, and residential construction costs about twenty percent of the appraisal value. So that's kind of how we've based this budget off of. We raise our funds through other government funding, through private sector and things like that. And we sell it at a zero percent interest mortgage over thirty years. How we sell the homes is one mortgage, a first mortgage, that is hard, zero percent thirty, and then a second forgivable. So it'd still be affordable at the cost that's discussed in the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Sir, anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, you have any questions or comments?
Will this bump up the timelines? And so one of the things we're concerned about is how long it might take to see?
Will it have any impact on our time?
It was our hope that it would expedite the Habitat project just a little bit. And then, just as a sidebar, we also submitted a Welcome Home Ohio grant application for just under a million dollars that, if awarded, would give thirty thousand dollars per unit for construction. So between those two, we really have high hopes that we can expedite the project.
Awesome.
Very good news.
Well, I'm presuming that, I mean, we didn't really talk about this, but if that's one of the major costs in development, I'm hoping that that cost savings is reflected in the purchase prices of the house. Would the houses be more affordable than they would have been otherwise, thanks to the infrastructure costs being?
Yeah, we're hoping this can help them stay more affordable for homeowners. We sell it at the affordable rate either way, but they will hopefully be more affordable due to funding for the project.
All right, thank you.
And as a nonprofit, that money would just go forward to other houses for those who need it.
You know, but it definitely cuts if one of the costs of houses is infrastructure. I mean, I guess one of these things, this is now becoming a routine topic of conversation for us, which is affordable housing, what to do about it. But it's worth noting that it wasn't very many years ago. This was not something the city of Oxford talked about or had any direct involvement in. So the fact that, and granted, ARPA has helped us enormously, and that kind of money, hopefully, we're using it the way it was intended to be impactful for the long term. And I think we're doing that. Hardly anything's more long-term than streets and sewers and things like that that would support an affordable housing development. But yeah, I'm glad we're using it for these purposes, which are noble.
I think it's great to see us moving forward on these. We've been talking about it enough, and it's good to see it actually move forward. I've been to several ribbon cuttings for Habitat on their current projects and met the people who are living in them. They're good people, and they just need a help to get themselves started. And I think this will continue that process of getting these people a good place to live, and they can participate in it, and they can learn about how to finance and control their finances. I think it's a great program, and I'm glad to support it.
Anybody else? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Resolution's adopted. Thank you, Jessica. Ready?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to grant three hundred thousand dollars of the City of Oxford American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services for engineering, design, and construction of a new facility.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Jessica?
Hello again. We, as a city, have granted the Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services one point five million of the Butler County ARPA funds as a sub-recipient. These funds were directly to be used for construction only and not allowed to be used for engineering and design or any cost overage. And so when we first got this notice from the county, we started talking about, you know, what else could we do? And TOPS did submit a memo with what they could do with additional funds at the two-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred, and one million dollar level. During the county work set, or excuse me, county, during our work sessions discussing the county ARPA funds, I felt like there were some directives to try to help TOPS with our local dollars. So this is almost the last bit of our local ARPA funds. There's about a little over twenty thousand dollars left that's unassigned. There is a little bit left that's like assigned to a project but has yet to be spent that we imagine come July, if it's not then being used, we can reallocate somewhere else. But all funds do need to be encumbered in two thousand and twenty-four for a project. So we're on time. This would allow TOPS to use it for engineering and design, and then if they have any overage for additional costs for their construction. And I also have a representative here from TOPS if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Come on up. Good to see you, Sheri.
Hello. I just want to say thank you for considering this.
Introduce yourself first.
Oh, sorry, I'm Sheri Martin. I'm the Executive Director for TOPS. And Jessica has us on a timeline with deadlines and clear goals, and she's been very helpful. And this money would allow us to continue progressing so we can stay on target.
Perfect. Thank you, Sheri. Okay, sir, anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Again, just give us your name and where you live and for the record, and then we'll give you five minutes.
Okay, hi, my name is Suzie Hummel. I live on Hickory Hill Drive out on seventy-three. I don't know most of you. I'm new to, fairly new to Oxford. I've lived here for two and a half years now. Joined the TOPS board soon after I moved here, and I'm now the Secretary of the Board. And I just also wanted to say thank you for considering this because the amount of people that we have helped over the last year and a half has increased, I think, four times from when I first joined the board to now. So the demand is definitely there, the need is definitely there. And allowing us, giving us this money to build a new building will definitely help the gap in helping people in this community. So again, thank you. We're very grateful for your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sir, anyone else who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Let's vote.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you because it's the partnerships that make this possible.
Absolutely.
You know, that when it comes to providing social services, we do not have the operational capacity to do that. But in this case, we have capital dollars that can help someone build a building, you know, and then that organization can support the organization, there'll staffing to provide the services. And so without that partnership, it just wouldn't be possible to do what we're going to do. So it's wonderful that we had ARPA dollars to do this. It's a once-in-a-lifetime thing. I think we obviously have a long-going commitment to try to support the kind of work of TOPS, but it's great that we can do this.
It is. I want to thank Counselor Bracken, who's been working with TOPS and FRC all along and been a real advocate. And I appreciate your advocacy. I'm really excited to see it get to this point. And I had a good conversation with your architect, and so I think you're on a good track. So congratulations on that. You ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution's adopted. Go build a good building. All right, we'll move to ordinances on first reading, and we have one. You can read it.
An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oxford codified ordinances.
And what an exciting ordinance. Doug, do you want to describe that for us?
So this is our annual update of our codified ordinances. As you know, we use Walter H. Drain to codify our ordinances. This includes updating it with ordinances that we have passed throughout the year. For example, our tobacco retail licensing and our income tax changes, which were required by state law. It also includes changes to the city's Traffic and General Offenses Code to comply with state law, and that's what's mentioned in this ordinance. But we're also updating it with the ordinances that we passed throughout the year. So once these are adopted by council, then these revisions are published, both electronically and in limited hard copies. I might add, in case you may or may not be aware, but there's some useful tables in the front of the codified ordinances. For example, there's one that lists our annexations from nineteen forty-seven to our most current one. There's also a table that lists the zoning changes, PUDs, so on and so forth. So there are some useful tables in the front if you are looking for some historical information. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? First reading is where we usually hear about it. This one's not very controversial, so, okay. Counselors?
You know, we do have, if you actually, I did actually go through this because it is vastly important to keep it up to date.
There's some interesting stuff in it.
Yeah, I was, I was, I don't know, startled, chuckled at General Offenses Code five-oh-five-point-one-two on coloring rabbits or baby poultry for sale or just plain poultry. I have to say, our ordinance are quite complete.
That's important to know right before Easter.
I had a question. So, for example, the second to last one on page ninety-one, where it talks about carrying concealed weapons, so is that amended to reflect changes at the state level?
Yeah, these are to reflect changes at the state level. Both the Traffic Code and the General Offenses Code. It was either amended or changed or added.
The state continues to play around with the notion of home rule.
I might add something that is a little-known fact as it relates to why people might wonder, why do we have a municipal code and a state code? There are a multitude of reasons, no doubt. But the two that I think matter most are, one, with codified ordinances, there are some matters of local concern that just don't hit the state radar. But more importantly, there's a funding issue. The, you may have heard this before, but if a individual is charged under the codified ordinances of the municipality, they pay for any jail costs. If you're charged under the state code, that is paid by the county. So there are conscious decisions made by police as it relates to how a person might be charged based upon whether or not there might be arrest that's effectuated, which that explains why they might be charged under the state of Ohio versus the defendant versus city of Oxford versus the defendant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions or comments? All right, this will come at our next meeting for a vote. We'll move now to second readings. You can read the first one.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Oxford, Ohio for approximately three-point-three-three acres of land located at six-oh-one, six-oh-three, and six-oh-seven West Chestnut Street from the single-family low-density residential district to single and two-family residential district.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, I missed the first reading, but I understand there were not any major questions to follow up on, so no changes there. This is the three-and-a-third acres on Chestnut Streets, referencing the Habitat project that was mentioned earlier, so R-one-A to R-two-A.
Okay, thank you very much. Sir, anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, that has changed a lot since we first started talking about that property. Would anyone from council like to discuss this ordinance? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Naveley?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted, six-zero, and we'll move to the second.
An ordinance levying upon the lots and lands enumerated in the list of estimated assessments, the amounts set forth on such list and setting forth terms of payment of assessments.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, sir, this is the fourth and final piece of legislation needed for our curb gutter sidewalk program from two thousand and twenty-three. So council's already approved the three prior resolutions, and this is the levying ordinance. Once approved, resident will have thirty days. They can pay their assessment by cash still to the city, and then finance will certify these costs to the county to go on the property's tax bill. At that point, the property owner will have five years to pay the debt at an interest rate of five percent. Be glad to answer questions.
So they have a choice. They can pay it all at once, or they can spread it out on their?
Yes. It's especially important if you're planning a sale of your property to clean that up and pay the bill so it doesn't cloud the sale of your property.
Exactly. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors? Nothing new? All right, call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Naveley?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted. We'll move to number three.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-seven fifty, supplemental budget ordinance number one, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi, welcome.
Good evening. This is the same, but there's no changes to the previous ordinance. The first reading that we brought forward.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? All right, counselors? I don't see anybody. Call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Naveley?
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. And now we will move to announcements in communications, and I will begin with City Manager Elliot.
Just a few comments. I know that Kathy and Ann had brought up the fire EMS data and, you know, the presentation that I made to council, and then I revised it. It's available on our website, but then I got my phone out and did a search, and our search engine doesn't bring it up. So we know we have to work on that, but I will share this with you. We'll put it on a prominent place, probably under the city manager's website and news so that people can easily find that data because, you know, it's out there, but we're not trying to hide it. And of course, as far as our financial situation goes, I do know that the budget is on the city's website under the finance department. It clearly shows that we're overspending for the last two years in the fire division. So, you know, it's an important issue that we'll continue to address. One last thing that I wanted to share with council, I mentioned the tobacco retail license provisions that we passed last year. And of course, as you all know, the legislature had proposed a bill to take away local government's authority to regulate flavored tobacco products, and that bill was vetoed by the governor. Then the legislature slipped it into the budget bill, amended substitute House Bill Number 33. The governor vetoed it again, and of course, they overrode his veto. And, you know, it's kind of troubling because, you know, I've always been bothered by this notion that we have in our constitution that no bill shall contain more than one subject, which shall be clearly expressed in its title. They continue to, in my opinion, violate that provision in our constitution. And of course, I think they rely on a couple of Supreme Court cases, and one that I found that said, "The court held that only a manifestly gross and fraudulent violation of the one-subject rule will cause a legislative enactment to be invalidated." So we'll see what happens because the city of Columbus is going to challenge this veto, and we'll see what that provision, what that, how that court case ends up. I'm not a betting man, but my guess is that the legislature will prevail, given the conservative nature of the Supreme Court. But we'll see, we'll see. But we have to decide administratively if we're going to move forward with it because, you know, the amended budget bill, that basically was vetoed and then overridden. That provision basically said that we can't regulate tobacco products. And then it went on to say that if we did, in addition to any other relief provided, the court shall award cost and reasonable attorney fees to any person, group, or entity that prevails in a challenge to an ordinance or other action as being in conflict with this section. So, you know, it doesn't bode well for us, I don't think. But, you know, it's, it happens again and again. You know, our styrofoam ban, you know, they basically preempted us on that, and it's disappointing, you know. Local governments are laboratories of experimentation, I feel, and, you know, we can improve society, you know, one by one. We don't always have to agree, but maybe if one local government tries something and it, let's say, improves the health of the population, then maybe it's a good thing. But, you know, this one-size-fits-all mentality that we have at the state level is, I don't think, very helpful. I'll get off my soapbox.
I think it's something to communicate with our legislators about, for sure. Mike? JJ?
Just want to give a couple quick shout-outs here. First to Lieutenant Robinson, who just recently graduated from the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program that the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police puts on. It's a year-long program. We're at graduate-level work. It is pretty intense because you're doing that on top of all your other regular duties. So kudos to him for getting that done. And also to the patrol division, which he oversees, for their hard work over this J-term or winter break. It's always been a challenge for us to prevent burglaries. And this year, I thought they did a really good job, and we did a better job of tracking data to show what they do. So as you know, we have a vacant house check program, and over the course of that six weeks, I think it is, or whatever that length of time is, they individually checked 532 different houses. I don't know how many were on the list, less than that, but we checked them multiple times over that break. They did 61 sector checks, which sector, we basically divide the mile square into different sectors, and you go on patrol on foot during that. So we estimate they did about 46 hours of walking patrols during that time, which was good because then we, in the end, we only had four burglaries. And I'm not even sure if you can count all of them. I can't really talk about those details, but some of them weren't the standard, like stranger burglary that you break in that we often see. So good job to our patrol and to our detective division who had deployed a network of cameras out there to assist them as well. So I just wanted to have that. And then also for the public and for council as well, our Citizens Police Academy is about to start. It starts on February 19th. We've shared this on our social media. If anyone is interested, it's a really good program to see all the different aspects of policing and to kind of get to know the officers who police your community and ask questions. We cover all kinds of different topics. We also bring in presenters from the court, the coroner's office, dispatch. We, the SWAT team does demos, and then you get to go to a gun range. It's 10 weeks on Monday nights, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. We still have space available, although it is limited. If you're interested in that, contact Lieutenant Fenning at the city of Oxford. I'm sorry, L. Fenning at citivoxford.org or email, or give us a call at the police department. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it very much. Chief DeThridge? Mr. Robinson? Okay, Sam? Oh, Heidi, I missed you.
That's okay. I have nothing.
Oh, I don't know how I missed you.
Just two announcements. One is I invite everyone to Friday's Public Art Reception at the City Municipal Building. We have our new display of public art up. That'll be up for about a year. And so we'll have the artists there, and we'll walk around. And it's in conjunction with the Oxford Community Arts Center's second Friday, so I hope you'll join us. We're at 6:30, and then we can head on over to theirs for the music and things like that. And second, I just want to share that together Rena Murphy, our Climate Sustainability Coordinator, myself submitted a topic for the Ohio City Managers Association Conference called Small Town, Big Climate Goals. And our presentation was accepted, and we're going to talk about our climate action plan and our actions, our fall, our missteps and our perseverance. And so it'll be kind of a fun thing to share. Thanks.
Excellent. I went to the art exhibit last year. It was great. It was fun to meet the artists. They stand by their artwork, and you can talk with them and ask them questions. It's really quite a nice event. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Who did a lot of work last year. Are you going to do it again?
Yes, so the city manager asked me to update council on matters pertaining to the events of November and the arrest of the young man. So procedurally, we have retained the lawyers who are going to conduct the investigation. They have been provided with all the relevant information that is available. They're on their own pace. It's an independent investigation. I'm only there to facilitate a process. We are in the process of getting the other information that's necessary because it's an investigative process to the police officers' counsel. I would ask everybody that the process needs to play out. I'm expecting it will be complete probably by the end of the month or so. How it turns out, I don't know. We have built into the process the opportunity for council to have a presentation if it desires some information on the event, but that will be to be determined. So I'd simply let the public know that there is, the process has been initiated, it is ongoing, and there will be transparency when appropriate in time. So please be patient and be aware that some things are happening.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Mike?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay, Alex?
If you were listening to our conversation between the work session, or between the work session and the executive session, eclipse fervor is really hitting Ohio, in particular Oxford. So we're just really getting ready for a total eclipse of the parks. And the registration link for the space race is now live. So that race will be a five and 10K taking place the Sunday morning before the eclipse. That's Sunday, April 7th. It will kick off at 9:00 a.m. You can run, you can walk, you don't have to go real fast. But we do want to see you there. So thanks so much.
Okay, Amber?
Yeah, a few things. First of all, thank you to the patrol officers for the work they do during winter break. I think it's one of the things that's a challenge when you have huge swaths of a community that become vacant because we don't have mixed living in our town and in much of the mile square. Because it's so vacant, they become attractive targets for people who want to take things because the students', things are still there over break. And so it's another example of how important it is to have mixed residential and student income so that there can be a presence in various parts of the community year-round. It helps, it's a part of public safety, actually. It helps to ease the burden on our police officers. But I do want to thank them for the work that they've done in that area. I also want to acknowledge, maybe should have said this earlier, that we did get some opposition statements to rezoning the area in Chestnut. And I do want to acknowledge and thank those people for writing in their concerns. The concern that they expressed was that they didn't believe that the city could ensure that the proposed development can be designed sensitively and appropriately to fit the neighborhood. And I just want to encourage everyone to understand that our city staff and council will work hard with Habitat for Humanity to design housing that is commensurate with the quality of housing that we want to see in Oxford, but that all over this country there are conversations about increasing density to increase housing affordability. Oxford certainly is not alone in that area. And I think that it's a good thing that we chose to rezone that area. Finally, happy Bob Marley Day. It is Bob Marley Day today. So if you're ever having a rough day, just play like Three Little Birds or something, and you'll feel better. And happy birthday to my niece Zoe, who turns 18 today. I texted her last week, and I asked her to do one of the most powerful things she can do on her 18th birthday, and that is register to vote. So I sent her a link to the voter registration page in California. She promised me that she would do it. Sent her a gift through Cash App ahead of her doing it. I'm not bribing her, but I'm just encouraging her. And anyone who turns 18 should really give themselves...
And Amber will pay you as well.
Give themselves a gift and our country a gift. Register to vote.
That's the gift.
Yes, that's the gift. Thank you.
Jason?
I just wanted to throw my support behind a presentation and discussing, discussion on the findings of the outside council's investigation when it comes. I think that would be good for us to ask some questions and the public to know what's going on and have their concerns addressed.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a good reminder. I was going to ask you, one of the things that I wonder if staff, and I'm happy to help with this, might prepare a fact sheet or something. I mean, there's a lot of information in the budgets to wade through, and your presentations are lengthy and thorough, but something that, you know, one pager that summarizes the issues really might circulate more widely to help people understand that. Want to thank us, everybody, particularly Jessica, for the Amtrak conversation and the persistence in moving this forward. Let's hope as we get over the finish line, it can be as collaborative as it started and with good feelings all around, and we can get the best product possible. I did want to, well, just comment on, as a person who walks through Uptown every day to and from work, I get to see all the changes in the local businesses, like when they happen. And it's really nice to be living in a time with so much new small-business startups in Oxford. In a small town, you do not take for granted the kind of bakery that you've been hoping for, for as long as you've been living here, or the brick-fired pizza or the new taco place that's coming, so.
Or chicken place.
Or chicken places. And so, and I know that that's private entrepreneurship, but I know that our economic development staff or community development staff help people through that process. Speaking of partnerships, the last thing I want to say is that a few weeks ago, you know, many of us, or a number of us, were there to celebrate the groundbreaking of the BCRTA multimodal facility. And, you know, I was honored to put on the hard hat and, you know, pretend to break ground on it, knowing that so far, I think we've been good allies and rah-rah, and we've tried to work through some things, but so far, to my knowledge, at no financial cost to the city, BCRTA has approached us about the issue of the sewer and water tap-ins that, you know, and asking that we consider that as, waiving them is an in-kind thing. I don't know what the value of an in-kind waiving it is versus a cash dollar value of what it costs to them, but I would just express my hope that it would be nice to look at that facility and know that we had been a financial partner as well as boosters. So if we can help them in that way, I hope that we can. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Today, I want to just recognize a graduate of Talawanda High School who was able to receive the Girl Scout Gold Award during 2023. From the Girl Scouts, they say, "Gold Award Girl Scouts are the dreamers and the doers who take, make the world a better place to the next level." It's a very important and hard-worked project that they undertake. And our local, we have a local student who achieved this high level, and her name is Emily Shoker. She lives on Jacob Drive. And so if anyone knows Emily or sees Emily, I hope that you will congratulate her and let her know that city council knows what she did, and we appreciate it. She's a graduate of Talawanda High School. Her project was native pollinator garden. And she worked with the city and other local organizations to create a learning garden at our community park while also educating her fellow community members about local species and the importance of planting for pollinators. I think that that deserves some applause from those students. So congratulations to Emily. I hope she's very proud.
We'll have to clap really loud because she's across the ocean in Scotland.
Yeah, I know. But she'll get the message, and I'm sure that people will tell her, and I'm very happy for her. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.